Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Any questions? I'm going to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the September eleventh meeting. Any questions?
Well, there's not a lot, but many things to do with NJHS. They just got new officers. Natalie Cable is our president. Oliver Ivors is vice president. Beau French is our treasurer and Jamie Ferrero is our so proud of her. Our NJHS members gave a total of four hundred forty hours of service to our community over the summer, volunteering in a variety of organizations and assisting individual senior citizens and families in Genesee. SUNY Genesee had reached out to the NJHS over this summer, needing volunteers to help on campus and members signed up to work their events. We have members signed up to work the spirit walk at Temple Hill Cemetery in October. We have members signed up to help with the PTSA trunk or tree. Coming soon will be their food drive for the food pantry. PSATs were due, registration was due today, with the actual test being later. Senior nights are now occurring or have occurred. Along with that, clubs are finally starting. I know do-gooders have started and Earthwise have started and Math Athletics is soon to come up. Eurobook sales are currently fifty dollars until October thirteenth and it'll be fifty-five dollars after that. Pep Band has two more games that they're playing at, October thirteenth and October twentieth, both home games for football. The end of five weeks is the end is tomorrow. And Play Bros. are in full swing and we're doing great so far. We're almost done with act one and are going to be memorized hopefully by Tuesday. The sponsorships are out already. Ms. Chandler sent out an email for that information. And we have a show date change. Instead of the seventeenth and eighteenth, it's seventeenth in the evening, eighteenth in the evening and nineteenth in the afternoon instead of on the eighteen. Any questions?
Going to have online ticket sales for you?
Yes, I have sent patron tickets to those who were patrons last year, but I'll send them out to the entire Genesee community this week probably. And they'll be online, but if you don't want to order online, Mr. Dwyer, I can still take care of it.
That's like I, I knew you'd take care of me. Thank you very much.
Not to mention anybody.
Do you have other questions?
Mr. Rose?
Thank you for allowing me to come in. It's probably not a real surprise as to why I'm here. And it's similar to last year, so it's not a whole lot of new information, new pictures to share. Thank you. This, this is actually my favorite here. This was, it actually started pouring when we were at Quincy Market last year. So the kids were kind of confined in the indoor space and you can kind of see there was a woman, this is her violin case. She was set up playing popular songs on her violin and we just had an impromptu sing-along. It was like the best advertisement for music education I could think of, so. So this is some of the experiences that we had on last year's trip and we are hoping that we can make this trip happen again this year with your approval. I know many of you have children who have participated in it, however many years ago or Matt, if you're like me, you had one at least that was this close to going and then kind of got shut down, but that's okay. So this is again our proposed list of things that we're going to do. I'm not going to, you know, get read it to you. It is a very similar itinerary to what we've had in the past, so. You know, like Mrs. DeBelle used to say, nothing new tried and true. It keeps us busy without keeping us burned out. So you know, there's not downtime that, you know, idle hands come into play, but we're not so busy that we don't get a chance to actually experience and enjoy the places that we go. The cost of the trip includes everything that was on the previous slide. We get two coach buses, which is often like a big thrill for the kids riding on the nice bus with the air conditioning. We get drivers, obviously. We get a tour guide last year with Mr. Mingus, which was a nice bonus. I saw him today subbing. He said he'd love to come again this year if it comes to be, so hopefully we can make that happen. We get two nights in a hotel in Andover. We get two breakfasts in the mornings. And then we give the kids money for Quincy Market, so they get to choose a dinner of their choice. And last year we were very proud of them. Not many of them just went for the standard pizza or hamburger. They actually kind of branched out and tried something new. As of now, the cost is six hundred nineteen dollars per student. It's forty more dollars than last year. Last year with fundraising, we were able to get it down to about four hundred dollars per student. We do, you know, offer scholarships to any family who financial hardships might be a concern. We try to emphasize the families. Money is not the reason your kids shouldn't go. They have the choice to not go and last year I think we had five students that their families chose not to go. But we really try to emphasize again, it don't feel that money isn't the reason that they shouldn't go. We, we provide scholarships. We have an incredibly generous community. I reached out to retired teachers last year and they gave over a thousand dollars. Not that we're going to do that every year. That'd be, you know, a little presumptuous of me, but we have the means to make those, make those, make that possible, I guess is the best way to put it. We've already started a fundraiser and we have thought of a couple of other things that we maybe do without, again, over fundraising the community. We know how tough that is, you know, all the organizations, eighth grade DC trip, band trip, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, like we, we get that. We really try to be mindful of not, you know, having, oh gosh, another whale watch fundraiser kind of thing. We try to be very mindful of that, so. And as of now, we have not heard any reason from the community and the families specifically in fifth grade that is too much. We had a conversation with Mrs. Kay last year and we kind of are like, well, let's see what the response is from the families. And it was a very enthusiastic, yes, we want to go and until that changes, we would like to continue to go because it's, it really is a wonderful experience. I know some of you have been as chaperones, so hopefully you remember those memories fondly. That maybe is it? Oh, okay. So here again, the fundraisers, again, nothing really that much earth shattering or new. But so these are the things that we do. And if you aren't aware, all of the money that we raised throughout the fundraising goes to the entire fifth grade class. It is not. Bailey raises a hundred dollars or her trip is a hundred dollars cheaper. Noah only got fifty dollars fundraising, so his, you know, it's all put together because ten and eleven year olds only have so much control over what can be sold and donated and so on and so forth. So that is our approach. It's been that way since before I got to fifth grade and what we've kept it that way to be as fair and equitable as possible for families. So I've talked really quick and everything else, but if you have any questions or anything else from anywhere, I'm happy to answer them as if I can and I will get the information if something I can't answer.
I do know another one organization at least would be willing to provide some donations, so we can talk more.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Dwyer, did you? Probably deal with a, an outfit that arranges these trips. Right, and, and are they responsible for getting the coach buses? What vendor?
Yes. Yeah, we work with First Choice Educational Tours there. I believe they're doing the DC trip. I know they're doing the band trip because my son is in band and we signed all the paperwork recently. They were out of Batavia. I think they've moved to the Niagara Falls area now, but they specialize in school trips. So they are very well versed in all of this and we've worked with them for, I think, over two decades in terms of like that specific travel agency, so. They kind of know what we like. I mean, they put the itinerary together for us over the summer and just kind of ask any changes, question mark, you know, but other than that, this, but yeah, so they, they get the transportation. They book all the hotels and they do, they do everything. We just, we just send the money, money and paperwork. Yeah, of course. Yeah, you're welcome.
One oh one for Google.
I'd like to make a motion. We approved the band trip for next June. Or whale watch, pardon me. Band is another trip. I'm sure, sure you got it right.
Not that it's any questions, but just really want to commend and thank the fifth grade teachers for all they do to plan this trip. It is an amazing trip, an opportunity for students, but that doesn't happen without their planning, the fundraising. It is truly a once in a lifetime trip, I think, for many students. So that wouldn't happen without all their hard work. So really the fifth grade team needs to be commended for that.
Thank you. Fall in favor? Any votes? So move. All right, good luck.
Next, we have Mr. Van Apps.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me in tonight. Working through a small cold here as everyone is since first month of school. So I'll do my best. The original presentation was going to focus on the three A New York State test results for Math in the LA as well as Allegiance's results. The embargo data wasn't released until about noon today. Would be tough to put together a presentation and be able to speak on it effectively. So I went basic. We decided to, to look at some local data as a way of showcasing the work that at the elementary level has started a couple of years back and has continued on with. The last time I was up here presenting, we talked about building knowledge, teacher knowledge to ensure that no matter what resource or program is being utilized, we, we anchor into the knowledge that our teachers have. And if we have consistent knowledge across the building, then we can use that to move the building forward. So today we're just going to be talking about some of the benchmarking data that has been collected, looking at where we were last year at this point, where we are this year, some of the changes that have helped support that. And then at the end, just talking about what the data is telling us and where we can go next. So I'm going to break this down into two different sections. We're going to talk about the foundations of literacy and the foundations of mathematics. Sometimes in talking with, with people who aren't always in the education realm, they say, well, so what do you do to teach reading? How do you teach reading? Well, these are the pieces. These are the foundational pieces, the building blocks that help us in teaching kids and adults to read, starting with phonemic awareness, which is taking the sounds, right? What are the sounds that we're hearing? And then the phonics piece is connecting the sounds to individual pictures, which are letters. Starting there at our most basic level, our primary levels, we then introduce high frequency words, vocabulary, and then comprehension in both the fiction realm and the nonfiction realm. The data that we're going to unpack just in just a little bit, we'll be looking at these six areas. At our primary levels in K two, we use a benchmark assessment tool for really great reading. It's a platform that helps us look at phonemic awareness and phonics. What I have up here is data from last fall and this fall. A quick pie charts with a lot of colors doesn't really tell the data, doesn't tell the story. But you will notice here is an increase in our green, albeit dark green to light green, and a decrease, although small, in our red. And that's what we like to see. We see confidence being built in the areas of phonemic awareness and phonics in our youngest learners. The phonemic awareness and phonics pieces are kind of like the basement of a house, the roots of a structure. Without this, our kiddos are trying to attack words without that foundation. You may hear about the reading wars, which talks about whole language, the whole language approach, or really breaking apart words based on the sounds that each individual picture will make. And that's what this assessment checks in on. Now, a lot of work was done between fall and fall. Our teachers have been looking at some phonics programs from this really great reading platform that is giving very clear explicit instruction in all of the phonemic awareness lenses as well as the phonics pieces as well. Our next piece of data is looking at that second grade to fifth grade band. Our iReady platform provides a benchmark and what you will see is spring of last year to fall of this year and the confidence that is being built from our kiddos. Although it is not a true fall to fall piece, I was pretty amazed at the level of confidence in our kiddos in this second go around. What this assessment does is it adapts as the students level up in each question. So if a kiddo gets a question wrong, it actually makes the next question either at that same level or it goes a little bit easier to help find a really concrete level of skills that they should be focusing on. A kiddo gets a question right, it keeps it at that level or adds a little bit of intensity. So what this tells me is, is our kiddos, A, took this seriously, really tried to put forth their best effort. When the assessment was given was early May of last year to mid-May and then our fall benchmark was happening in the first few months of this year. There's a testament here to the work that was done over the summer as well with, with some of our kiddos in our summer program. So just a quick snapshot of the diagnostic pieces. Now, the fall versus spring benchmark triangles that we see there are based on end of year standards and beginning of year expectations. So in the spring, it's what kiddo should have learned, whereas fall is here's where kiddo should be at this point. So it'll be interesting as we go through the year when we get to spring of 2023 where our kiddos are at. Our next piece of data is looking at a three grade level band. In the fall of last year, second, third and fourth grade to fall of this year, third, fourth and fifth graders. So those second graders shifting up to our third graders, our third graders shifting to fourth grade and our fourth graders shifting to fifth grade. You'll see some dramatic increases in those basic foundational skills. And this data is really helpful because we can take each grade level and dig deeper into the individual classrooms and individual students to see where are those gaps falling. A kiddo may be mastery in phonemic awareness and phonics and it may look like they're doing really well. It could be in a level green. However, when we dig deeper, it may uncover that a child is really struggling in comprehension of nonfiction. So then we can build some interventions around that or provide further supports for those kiddos in those.
I'm trying to follow you. The, the first two slides that you had up here were aggregated. And so this is the only one so far that shows a grade to grade like comparison. So fall of twenty-two to grade twenty, grade two would be the fall of twenty-three, grade three. So then that's.
I will, I'll talk a little bit about why I think there might be less of a growth in the grade two to grade three. If you look at grade three to grade four, a much larger rate of growth there. And also looking at the amount that the red is shrinking, right? We want less red, more green, and if we have green, how do we get more green from the yellow? So I'll talk about why I think that we need to move it slower. And then this is looking specifically at the fall placements. This is where our kiddos are finding that success. So I'll go back to that first piece of data where we talked around phonemic awareness and phonics and the confidence that's being built in our youngest learners. This is pretty telling in their ability to approach mastery and phonological awareness in grades two through five. And as you go down, you see those areas that we can begin to look at interventions for via grades, classrooms or individual students to support them in these areas. Now we'll look at the building blocks for math. Again, how do you teach kids math? These are the four domains that we approach generally in the elementary level. Numbers and operations, algebraic, algebra and algebraic thinking, measurement and data as well as geometry. And I'll show you some of the same data sets from our iReady diagnostic. Again, it's a tool that we've been harnessing for the last couple of years. What we've done over the last year is bring it down a level. This year we aim to bring it down another level so that we can begin to build this portfolio of data for students as they enter kindergarten. In the four different domains here, you'll see pretty consistent in all the areas. This is data that we can look at as we look at organizing our math curriculum, work that started over the summer and at the elementary level will continue this year to really fine tune each of these domains, looking at the priority standards of each. And then how do we ensure that as we teach them, we're able to reflect on that data, go back and revise those units after we've collected the data based on the individual needs that are presented? Was that where do you use aggregated versus? Same thing here. With our second grade becoming third grade, third grade becoming fourth, fourth becoming fifth, a huge jump here in the level of competence in, in each of the four domains. I think one piece that this data is telling us is kids are becoming more confident with the technology behind iReady as they integrate with the platform routinely. So this is a, an online assessment that kiddos take. Throughout the year, there are progress monitoring tools that will help to ensure that they're making the rate of growth that's expected. There's also lessons that are tied to each of this specific skills within the standards. So kids can engage with this daily as a resource to support classroom instruction. Teachers can manipulate lessons to target individual skills that kids may be showing less confidence in. So really it is a larger portfolio of tools beyond just this assessment, but a very helpful piece to have us looking at data and where we can continue to build opportunities in our curriculum.
And that slide there, in fall of twenty-two, we were measuring exactly the same thing as fall of twenty-three. It's a huge change. It's a nice change, but.
And I would say the, the amount of energy that went behind talking around iReady as a tool, not just as a, not just as an assessment piece is, is pretty important. Now here, you're not going to see much change at all. This is a data set from last fall to this fall, looking specifically when you approach this portfolio, this platform of tools, you can choose the individual domains that you're pulling into your data sets. And this is just the first two, numbers and operations and algebra and algebraic thinking. We go back to the foundational pieces of literacy, phonemic awareness and phonics. Those top two are kind of those foundations. And we're not seeing drastic change. We're seeing some change, but not drastic change in, in an increase or decrease in our red. There's actually a decrease in our, in our green, our, our tier one students, as they will call them. So these are our pieces that are real, right? We wouldn't want to avoid looking at this data because it doesn't make us feel as happy as the other data set does. But great questions then come from this, right? Our teachers are doing a phenomenal job working through their curriculum. But our kiddos are coming in with a different level of skill set. So what do we need to do in our curriculum? How do we adjust based on each individual skill that we're teaching to ensure that we're increasing some of that green and decreasing some of that red? As we look at the data, the colors tell us some stuff, but also it's not telling us other things. Both, both of these assessment tools are facilitated in a different manner. One is teacher providing student with a task card. They're working through it. They're providing answers, paper pencil version. The iReady is a computer-based assessment. So looking at the second graders, their first go at a computer-based assessment, some of those numbers may not be showcasing really what they truly know. So as we go through pushing this even lower in the first grade and then in the kindergarten over the next couple of years, are we looking at that data from multiple vantage points to ensure that, or making sure our kiddos know the skill, are they able then to apply it on the computer? Also a skill mastery based on standard taught at the time of year. So the data here is nationally normed and they expect students to have mastered this domain at this time of year. Our curriculum may be developed in a way that we work on a different domain based on what our kiddos may be coming in with. So with the standards, they're all end of year standards. Our teachers locally decide when they're taught. This data is saying by October, all students should be at master of this domain. So that's something that the data is not really telling us. Also the level of mastery, looking at are they at a basic level, intermediate and expanding or commanding? So kiddo may be able to do a write there question, as we call it, two plus two. You put it into a word problem and they may fall off the rails. This data is not really telling us all that. But it is giving us some next step that we can work on. Looking at our standards-based unit assessments is work that the elementary started this summer. Then looking at skill-based probes with that level of mastery, can a kiddo do two plus two? Can they do it in a word problem? Can they find the answer in a multiple choice question? And then true commanding is finding errors in others' work. Standards-based diagnostics, which are those larger three times a year local assessments, paper pencils, so we can then look at that data versus a computer-based version of a very similar assessment. And then looking at our tier one instruction, tier two and tier three instruction, and then that continuous curriculum review cycle. Teachers are working their tails off to get this data to ensure that kiddos are really putting their energy behind it. So this is, this is a kudos to them. Great success stories here and I'm excited to see it continue to play out as the year goes on.
Okay. How long has the district been using the Really Great Reading?
So our primary teachers started engaging with the science of reading about two, two years ago. At the start of last year, we began piloting aspects of the science of reading, really great reading materials. And this year we have a full K through two curriculum built from their resource. Many years ago, it was part of just our intervention services, a tier two and tier three intervention AIS tool. But post-COVID, we recognized so many students were lacking those foundational reading skills. So taking a tier two or tier three resource, that's really for a small group of kiddos and saying, let's make this our base, really has shown some success.
And is that a scripted program?
It is pretty scripted. There's, there's not much opportunity for in the moment adjustment. However, our teachers have done a great job of looking for ways to extend and enrich and reteach with the a layer of the, the platform. They have a grouping matrix where it says this is where a student should be in this specific unit. Our teachers are looking at building differentiated groupings. So we have kiddos in second grade working on the kindergarten platform because that's where their needs lie. Not that, you know, a very traditional way of thinking, every second grader is getting this. They are getting a base, you know, second grade standard instruction through some of our integrity resources, we'll say in second grade. But then they're going to a different group to get very differentiated, skill-specific targeted work at a kindergarten level if that's where their need is. We've also introduced this down into our UPK. So they're going to be getting, they're going to be hopefully coming in with confidence in phonemic awareness, which is that first layer of that road.
So what, what intervention resources are you using now? If you're not using this as a tier three?
We're, we're looking at the layers of this that can be a tier one. So all of our kindergartners are getting access to this. And then kinders that are coming in with gaps in phonemic awareness, they're going back to the pre-K level. So they're shifting the instructional piece, group size, and the like.
And for the iReady, is there a reason why you, you stopped using the diagnostic tool that Really Great Reading has?
Yeah, good question. The diagnostic tool for Really Great Reading goes up through second grade. They say that these are the, the basic foundational pieces, the first two building blocks. If you've mastered those, you're kind of out of that. You're going into vocabulary. You're now putting the sounds together. You've shown that you've understood, you can master the, the basics of decoding. Then you go into the comprehensive.
The last question I had was about the iReady diagnostics. Are they given time in school to do that? As the curriculum person, I would recommend carrying that forward for as long as you use the iReady diagnostic because I'm aware of at least one child that was doing it at home and didn't care as much.
Yeah, a different level of, of intensity. So one thing that I'm looking at is ways to build energy as a system. I think this data is telling the power of the resource. It is then saying, are we using it in a way that's helping us make instructional decisions? When we have those conversations, there's much more energy behind it and we can make it a thing, not just an extra.
While Sherry, while Sherry is pulling up the PowerPoint, just want to start with a couple of celebrations. One is this Friday is our second conference day of the year. Well, actually, actually it'll be in our fourth conference day of the year, the training we did earlier this year. I'm kind of excited to and continuing to work on really identifying the goals and action steps of our strategic plan. We will be breaking the staff up into four different areas. We will be breaking the staff into four different areas of the four goals. Talking about um curriculum instruction, talking about our social emotional learning, um talking about our communication as well as our financial planning. So um the fourth goal will really focus on the heart of the capital project, that presentation that we have been taking to. Public meetings um and and having that feedback. So we did offer a faculty meeting here and um had, I think, maybe ten faculty members attend that meeting. So really want to get feedback from more of the faculty, so that's what that fourth session will be, but really looking forward to working with our staff on those things. Annually, the Genesee Valley School Boards Association awards an Albert W. Hawke Award for a distinguished school board member. And this service is presented annually to a current or a former school uh board member. Um it's a distinguished service award and this person should be recognized for their outstanding contributions to both public education. And children in his or her own community. And this person doesn't even know that they were nominated for the award. But I would like to let you know that today we were notified that Craig Phelps has been awarded the Al Hawke. Um award for a distinguished board. Thank you for your service. Um we do have David Finkmeyer, um he is the structural engineer that has been working with us on the. Um gymnasium wall situation that you all are very, very familiar with after the multiple um presentations. So um what I did is I requested that board members send questions ahead of time. And really what I did, I sent those questions ahead to David and and Ted is going to jump in as well. But I really just posted those questions on on my PowerPoint slides, just to have everyone see what the question is and and to hear the response in in a public session. So again, it's our board member capital improvement project discussion. And um so David, can you hear us?
Can you hear me all right?
We can't, we need to turn that up. So David, the first question is, provide the technical specifications of the steel shoring strips in the big gym pertaining to the structural integrity and life cycle.
So let me um um start off with that, not to totally recap our inspection reports, but just so everybody knows. Um so we're dealing with a four-inch masonry wall that's well over like thirty feet tall. So it's a very, you know, suspect and unconventional, um you know, type of construction. In addition to that, they, it wasn't even built correctly per those original drawings. Um I guess even even worse than that, the the masonry units are, they're not bonded together, there's no mortar joints, so they were simply glued together. And then over the years, that adhesive is totally degraded, so basically it has has no value. So these blocks are basically just dry stacked on top of each other. So the strapping, the strapping is really, uh for lack of a better term, a a failsafe or a Band-Aid. To hold those unbounded, those unbounded units together. Um it basically provides like a temporary assurance that if, you know, if there is an event and the wall moves or individual masonry units are kind of displaced. You won't have like a major event where, you know, you know, collapse or individual units falling out. So. You can't, you can't really um use, um I guess you could say. You can't really engineer a wall of this type, or at least the reinforcing of all of this type, because it's not a wall you would ever build. And it's kind of a, the strapping measure is basically a temporary measure, basically using empirical evidence in twenty-five years. By twenty-five years of structural design experience that makes me comfortable enough, you know, telling you that, you know, you're, it's safe in the short term. Until like, you know, it can be replaced in the next, you know, handful of years, so. I don't know if that answers your questions, or if you want to, that's that specific question, or if you want to have any follow-up questions on that.
So David, um. Typically, what's the maximum height of a four-inch, see it? Block?
So normally, you wouldn't, you would never have basically an unsupported four-inch wall. I would say even a six-inch unreinforced wall, masonry wall, you would probably limit that to about ten feet. So we're, so we're even, you know, way, way beyond that.
For in that area. So then, can you, i- is there some sort of lateral pressure testing that you can do to tell us? Is that, we've been told anecdotally that this, the metal stripping tied to the top, to the bottom. Is is a two-year. Life? How do we, how do we assess, would it go longer or not?
Yeah, it could, it could potentially go, go longer. So, yeah, so a a normal wall, if you're designing a new wall, interior wall would be designed for an internal pressure of like five pounds, five pounds per square foot. Of uniform lateral pressure. You know, and that's designed for, you know, that's New York State Building Code, but then you also have the special condition here where it's a gym wall. And you can get, you know, objects hitting it and and get damage in in that sense. So a lot of different events could could damage the wall. So we've, you know, we've recommended that we, if we do annual inspections, basically, and I think we scheduled one for this winter. If we do annual inspections, I think we can um see if there were any events that caused it to move, but it's still. You're basically opening yourself up to a situation where if there is any, any event, whether it be, you know, severe weather event. Or or, you know, something striking it in the gym activity, you're opening yourself up to not an immediate, you know, collapse issue or anything like that. But if there, if we were to inspect it and find that there's, you know, significant displacement, then we have to like shut down the gym. And that's like an unplanned shutdown that I don't think anybody really wants to to deal with. So you, you're, you're kind of on borrowed time, you know, we can string it out for, you know, maybe another year or two beyond, you know, what we recommended. But um, you know, annual inspections and, you know, just keeping a close eye on it would be my recommendation.
What's the schedule? You said the winter?
Yeah.
Do you have, do you know specifically when?
Yes, we've actually planned that over the um winter break so that students aren't in that area. And I know that's going to be tough because there's still our practices, um but we really want time for the engineers to have a lot of time to inspect that space. Get up on lifts and and do the work they need to.
So what's the date of that?
Well, we don't have a date, it's going to be the winter break.
Uh what's, what's involved in that testing?
It's a visual inspection and basically comparing it to the conditions um when our original inspections and when the strapping was installed. Just to see if there would, there is any movement or events that, you know, caused, caused any kind of displacement. Or if you see any kind of, you know, structural, structural movement. So, yeah, there are, there aren't really tests that can be done, or at least nothing that I'd recommend for this application.
So at this point, we're still holding to the two years?
No, I s- I, like my report said, one to two years, but I think you're, we can extend it beyond that, maybe year to year as we continue to do these annual inspections. But I'm just saying that the longer you hold it out, the more likely there's going to be an event that could shut down the gym, you know. You know. If right, right after a event occurred, so it would be like an unplanned shutdown, so nothing you could, you know, plan for. So I guess that I, I, I'd recommend, I'd recommend starting the process of of, you know, having them replaced or or start a project that would include their replacement.
So. I guess if it's just a visual inspection, why are we waiting until winter break?
Well, I mean.
Buy something, you'd have to shut it down.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, I, I guess how often do you, I mean, do you want to inspect it weekly? I guess the, my, my thought was, or our thought is, that we would pick a time to start annual inspections. And then the um, you know, I'm sure the, the gym teachers would probably notice if they, if the balls, you know, if there is an event where, you know, something hits the wall. Of, you know, a softball or something and there's damage, then they would want to bring that to our attention, you know, and then we'd have some supplemental inspections. Um or if there's a, you know, it's unusual, but there could be a seismic event, there could be, you know, some severe vibration from, you know, nearby construction. There could be uh even, even though it's not a bearing wall, even like severe snow and windstorms could. You know, the whole building can move because of that and because this is an unconventional, you know, structural element that, you know, you could see movement in it. And the strapping is there to, you know, you know, temporarily, you know, as a failsafe, so you're not going to see a collapse. But you, you know, you could see some shifting in the wall. So, yeah, so I mean, we can, we can inspect it as much as you want, but that I, I really think annually would be, you know, a re- reasonable. Time. And then we, we've kind of scheduled it around a winter break when the students aren't there. And it gives us an opportunity to kind of pick a time within that week.
I think it's also important to note that um I, I think there's been, uh you know, maybe some miscommunication. That this, that the condition of this gym was due to the demolition of of the small gym. And that, that's not the case. The demolition of the small gym did not cause any of the issues in in the large gym. Um in fact, what, prior to demoing the small gym, we started to notice some significant failing in that small gym. Um which prompted the, the structural engineers to come up to that place. And we realized at that point that top tier of cinder blocks was not attached to anything. And that's what that, that last picture was showing was that they did weld those um those, those brackets at the top to keep the, the blocks in. So it's not that the demolition of the small gym caused the deficiencies in the large gym. We noticed it when, prior to demoing, and then when we did demo, we saw how quickly things fell on that walls that weren't supposed to be demoed. Fell just because of near demolition. We then inspected that large gym and found the deficiencies that we found there. So um, you know, I, I think the important message is, you know, one of the, the answers the board wants tonight is, is do we have time? To push out the vote and and make a decision? And and I would say cautiously, yes, we have time. Um, I would say, much like David said, a, a year to to two years to to make that decision. And think about how long that project takes, because we know, um, you know, if we voted this December, we weren't going to occupy that, occupy that space until two thousand. Um twenty-seven, so it, these projects take a long time. Um so do we have to make a decision tonight to vote in December? Absolutely not, we do have that time. We do have to be aware that there is a risk. If there was um an odd snowstorm where we got three to four feet of snow. And it caused a significant weight on that roof, could that be a ca- catastrophic event that would then cause us to have an inspection? Because we wouldn't wait to, we don't have any concerns about that space with that steel shoring right now. If we had concerns that something had happened, we would certainly call in and have that inspection done immediately. We, we don't want to put any student in danger. Um but I, I think the board also then has to understand, if that happens, that gym is shut down. And it will be shut down a long time before we can get a project out to voters, to SED, to get it planned and then repaired.
How, how long? Was it noticed that there was issues with the wall? Was it before the, the capital improvement project was underway?
No, it was right before we started demolition.
Okay.
Well, we noticed the gymnasium, I mean, uh David tells a story that when they were working on the roof. Um in the elementary library, that that blocks fell in the nineties, Dave.
Yeah, the first.
I mean, so.
I would, I would guess the, the walls have been susceptible to, to damage ever since the, the glue that holds them together was, has been degraded. And that's probably been for several years or decades, um because, I mean, that's, that's an unconventional construction to begin with. And um so like, as soon as that, that glue lost its, you know, integrity, basically, you're just, these are dry, dry stack blocks. Like, like, like Jenga blocks that could, that could move, you know, with any kind of um unusual, uh not unusual, but even any kind of vibrations. Or or anything striking it. So that's, that's why we, we basically tied them together with these, with these straps in order to provide some tensile resistance to any kind of. You know, gross, you know, or uh overall movement in the wall.
David, did you, did you inspect the entire building or just the gymnasium space?
We, we inspected, but a lot of the other areas, um, you know, the auditorium and the pool, pool areas where we had, where the walls are, you know, significant height. And uh we didn't, those were different types of construction and there were no, no signs of issues with those. I think I, there, there, there was a report we did on that um last year, I believe, yeah.
And and so in the course of an upcoming capital improvement project. Is there any risk associated with damage to existing parts of the building? If, say, the, the lowered pressure were reduced on the, on the roof?
Um you're saying like during, in the replacing of these walls, what you're saying with like the demolition damaged the surrounding structures?
Yeah, throughout the entire school.
Um I would say not, I mean, you would, they would have to follow, you know, typical, um, you know. Careful demolition processes and protect those existing, this existing areas. Yeah, they wouldn't want like a wrecking, you know, wrecking ball approach to demolition, they would have to be, you know, careful saw cuts and, you know, and, you know, careful removal of those walls. But those, those other walls in the building aren't, you know, there can still be vibrations and they would be okay because they aren't built in the same manner of this wall. So there wouldn't be the likelihood that they could be damaged in a similar way, where these, these walls are just susceptible to, you know, to even minor. You know, minor disturbances. In the, in the uh un-unstrapped ver- version of them. But the, uh those, those existing other walls of the building are all more conventionally built and can withstand, you know, some disturbance.
Um we also had a question that um Ted would probably be better to, to answer. If we decided not to expand the footprint of the building um in the next project, could one of the exterior walls of the gymnasium be constructed in a way that will make expansion easier in the future? And without compromising safety in the short term? Um I'll, I'll let him answer that, but I, I do think one of the things that we need to be careful of, and we need to run this by fiscal advisors. Um the state education department does not like to provide funding for areas that you. Renovee, so if you renovate it, say we renovate it now, we, we put a plan out there in three years, we would run the risk of potentially not getting building aid. On the areas, is that, is that correct, Mr. Forrester?
Well, just as we're not going to get aid if you go outside the existing structure of the building, anything. But the point is, is if, if, if there's a need to expand that space. Could you, could you construct it in a way, uh like, I know that they do this in, in other operational buildings. Where they plan for future expansion, where one of the walls can be blown out rather easily and uh account for expansion. So I didn't know, you know, I mean, as of now, we're not planning on going outside the existing footprint of the building. And, you know, I mean, there's all kinds of questions associated with that. Whether that's wise or not, that's for further discussion, but I just didn't know.
So I guess there's the financial and then there's the technical, in the technical respect. Yeah, so the short answer to that, and thank you guys for having us tonight, um is yes. We would just need to understand what the goals were. So we would work with Dave on our design, and if it was, you know, you want to add a small addition for a wrestling room, let's say. That might be a smaller opening. If you want to add to the gym an entire new gym space. And have it be totally open to the existing gym, that's something where we would have to design something that didn't have any columns in it. That you could remove the wall, so that might be, the bigger the opening, the more expensive it's going to be. But if we knew that you wanted to do that, even if it was five years or ten years down the road, expand um outside the footprint of the existing gym. We could theoretically design it to be much easier to remove than if we use, let's say, reinforced masonry. So instead of using reinforced masonry, where we have two, two sections of of concrete block and brick basically going up. It would be expensive to remove, we would come up with some type of panel system or a um, you know, a panelized section of the building. That could be taken out uh much easier, so we could definitely do that, we would just have to know what your goals are. We do that all the times with um, a very common one we do is a one-story addition where they think they might add a second story. So we'll beef up the structure, there's a cost to that, of course, there's going to be a little bit more cost probably to that wall. But um, you know, it might be incremental, it might be two or three percent. Um so it's not a huge cost, it's just a little bit extra. And then if you want to add a floor on top, we just, we beef up the structure to add that floor later. And uh it's a nominal cost, but then in the future, you don't have to deal with reinforcing the entire building underneath as an example of going up, just going out. But we could definitely do it, absolutely. This is going out, but we could definitely do it, absolutely. Any other, have questions? No.
There was a, you also had a question there about what mitigation techniques should be utilized during the construction of any unwanted movement to the building. I think, you know, David talked about just making sure that when um we looked at how we were demoing that building. That would obviously be a consideration that we have to take into um, into consideration when we're, we're demoing the building. Was there anything more that you could add to that, Ted or, or David?
Well, we, we cut a building in half two years ago, a school that was uh, we had demolished part of the school. And then we're gonna add on to it or we keep the rest. So it was a very surgical type of removal and we had dictating our specifications. They couldn't just come in like Dave said with a wrecking ball. But they could after they removed a section of the building that was safe enough to then remove the rest in a less delicate manner. So they, they had to go in and actually put some structural temporary supports in on the existing part that was gonna remain. And then as Dave mentioned, they had to do careful saw cutting and um uh. Almost hand and, 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 and smaller types of uh demolition equipment removal till they got it ten, fifteen feet away. Then they could have at it with the wrecking ball, but you've gotta do that part next to the building so you're not affecting the part that's gonna remain.
Any other questions?
Answer your questions, okay? Right, okay. At this point? All right, thank you. Much appreciated. It helps us a little bit at this point, but we're still trying to assess the next step.
Yeah, whatever you guys need, we're here to help you out. Thank you.
Actually, we still have to get some more feedback from various constituents. More to follow.
Thank you, David.
Anything else from your report?